Thanks today and are grateful for every blessing that we are able to enjoy. We are grateful to the many individuals who are employed by the city and those citizens who volunteer to serve our community in a variety of roles. Help us to represent all members of our community and to conduct ourselves respectfully and in a spirit of cooperation in deliberating matters that will impact our city today and in our future. Amen.
Amen.
So, I would like to call the meeting of August 7th, 2018, to order. And first, we have a proclamation for Health Center Week. It'll come down here. And I would ask those that are here with this, Robin and Nancy and your staff. And I've been asked to read this with a microphone. So, come on up and stand. I think it's for the video for the website. So, that's good. That's a good thing. This proclamation says, "Whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive health care in our nation's underserved communities. Health centers serve 27 million Americans in over 10,000 communities across the nation. And whereas, health centers are a critical element of the health system, integrating a wide variety of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs of the community. And whereas, the health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to health care access, including geography, income, and insurance status, and improves health care outcomes and reduces health care system costs. And whereas, health centers reduce overall costs of care by helping manage patients' chronic conditions, which keeps them out of costlier health care settings like hospital emergency rooms. And whereas, National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to recognize America's health center organizations, their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all responsible for their continued success and growth. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Shelley Brophy, Mayor of the City of Nacogdoches, and on behalf of City Council, to hereby recognize August 12th through 18th of 2018 as Health Center Week in Nacogdoches, Texas, and encourage all citizens to take part in this week by celebrating the importance of health centers in our community." That's a lot of good information, isn't it? I'm going to say it's long. And I'm going to ask my fellow council members to come down so we can get your picture. If you want someone to take that for you, you're in the history today.
Okay. I was going to say.
Well, we don't mind. It can be a picture. You want to hold it? Proclamation. Move it up. This slide. Scrooge. We got a line together today. Okay. We'll take a couple. Congratulations, of course. And I'll see you next week.
Thank you.
And it's so nice to meet you. Anita is our interim CEO. Maybe your next one. And Dr. Chio. Whoops. Dr. Chio is our clinical officer. Yes. After how many years? 28. 28 years of service. I didn't have gray hair before, though. Well, thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Okay. Well. Next on our agenda is open forum. And I'd like to remind you that the open forum is the public's opportunity to address council on any matter related to the city that is not on the agenda. In accordance with the Texas Opens Meetings Act, City Council generally cannot discuss, consider, or take action on matters not listed on the agenda. Your comments are limited to three minutes. And we have Mr. Charles Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Troy Golden, Matt Moore. Some of the most important aspects of serving on this board are fiscal responsibility of looking at the expenditure of funds and is this going to get the most bang for the buck for Nacogdoches. There are quite a number of really deserving organizations. You saw one just moments ago with the health care area. Nedco is going to be speaking in a few minutes. Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful, the museum in the train station. There are, you're also hearing from the fire department and emergency services. All of these folks would love to have an extra half million dollars. And when you expend funds for Nacogdoches, if you're not asking the hard questions, if you're not looking at alternatives to spending half million dollar chunks, then you probably are not adequately performing your duties in terms of fiscal responsibility.
Item number four, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does any council member want to remove anything? And if not, Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion, approve consent agenda.
I second it.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And our regular agenda, number six, receive annual report from the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation. And Ms. Philpott?
How are y'all?
Doing well, thank you.
I am Larissa Philpott, the Economic Development Director for the City of Nacogdoches and President and CEO of the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation. Tonight, I am here to give you our annual report for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. Just a reminder, overall, Nedco's goal is to facilitate an environment where employers can create new jobs, where our economy is diversified, where employers can offer competitive wages, and workers can obtain skills. Those foundational issues all work together to ensure that our standard of living is maintained and improved. So, how do we measure our economic standing, our economic health and improvements? We've talked previously about measuring our success and how do we do that? These are the items on the list that we've discussed previously. I won't run through all of them, but just know that our unemployment rate is doing very well. As it is across the country, our property valuations are up, sales tax is up, population growth is up just very, very slightly. I would say that that's holding steady. Per capita income is also holding steady. Percent below poverty is the same. Our high school graduation rate has fluctuated a little bit over the past two to three years. Crime rate is excellent. Our SFA enrollment is up slightly from year to year over the last few years, and our job creation is up just slightly as well. The items on the right-hand side of the column there are items that are not as easy to measure, but they're still indicators that we need to pay attention to. So, workforce readiness. Do our employers feel like they have an adequate workforce? With our incredibly low unemployment rate, we are hearing from our employers that they are seeking employees, that some of them are having trouble finding qualified employees. Part of that, we think, could be, or a large portion of that, could be helped with establishment of a technical training center that we've talked about and we will continue to work on. Civic satisfaction. Are people participating? Are they apathetic? Are they showing up here with pitchforks? We want to make sure that we have a happy balance of that civic participation. And we've seen that in more involvement at city council meetings. I can definitely say that I've seen that, more involvement in our NISD school board meetings. So, there are citizens participating. Unfortunately, when you measure voter turnout, that number fluctuates greatly from election to election. So, that's not a great statistic that we can get a lot of meaningful data out of. Quality of employment. Do we hear of people leaving Nacogdoches for better jobs elsewhere? Unfortunately, we do hear that from time to time. So, that is also tied to readiness. Do we have our, the folks that live in Nacogdoches ready to work the jobs that are here? And environmental quality. Do we have clean air, clean water? Do we have healthy natural areas and open space? Those are all things that we need to make sure that we're paying attention to. So, using our strengths and our limitations. Our focus for 2017 and 2018 was the items listed on the slide before you, of course, to retain and grow existing businesses. So, that means assisting existing businesses through issues. It's really on the ground, day to day, dealing with the problems that they're dealing with, be it a permitting issue, or a hiring issue, or something like that. Facilitating economic development agreements, such is the one that the council graciously helps Nacogdoches Medical Center with, their Enterprise Zone project earlier this year. That was a great assistance to our medical community. Support growth at SFA. Nedco this year participated in an economic development committee with several Board of Regents members at SFA, and through that committee, we have several large projects that are moving forward, including a project possibly downtown, as well as some internships programs that we are working on. Continued downtown progress. Downtown is doing so well that Jim Jeffers and I actually discussed several times how to phrase that, because we've always said, "Improve downtown." Well, downtown is great. So, we really need to just continue to build on what is great downtown. I work very closely with Amy Mahaffey, working on recruiting possible new property owners to our empty spaces downtown. And we've been through several of those this year that we've worked through, haven't had a huge success, other than our Storywrite Building next door, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. Recruiting. It's the never-ending, rarely-winning, but wildly rewarding part of economic development. We are continually responding to site selectors, continually refining what we are pushing out to site selectors, and hope to work with you in the coming year on how we can better position Nacogdoches for those site selectors. So, under recruiting, who are we recruiting? We're recruiting what makes sense. We're recruiting people that are, we have an adequate workforce for. No, we did not put in a bid for Amazon. We are recruiting retail that makes sense for our retail market. We are recruiting technological advances, companies that use technologies that don't detract from our strengths, from our tourism environment and things like that. And also, companies that would provide jobs for our SFA graduates. So, who is "we"? I'll say "we" a lot in this presentation. None of our accomplishments are in a vacuum. None of our accomplishments are Nedco's alone. Additionally, all of the partners listed on this page all perform economic development activities. So, that is, of course, our 65 Nedco members, and some of which who are in the room tonight, and I appreciate them attending for us. Our executive committee members on Nedco, who spend hours on committees and working with other Nedco members and other businesses in the community. And then all of our partners. The city is our largest funding member, and also, one could argue, our most important partner, because you set the infrastructure and the incentives and the investments that we are able to provide to businesses by and large throughout the county. You're the largest entity that's able to do that. We are working hard to get more involvement, economic development involvement, in our rural communities and our ISDs. Mary Frances Bradford and I have spent the last couple of weeks meeting with superintendents to work on their needs in our rural communities. The CVB and Chamber of Commerce, you hear Sheri Morgan and Wayne Mitchell say constantly that they've never worked in an environment that's so collaborative, and I think that's incredibly helpful to the job that I do. Our Small Business Development Center, Larry Kane works out of the Angelina College office and continually repeats the fact that Nacogdoches is one of his busiest communities, if not his top community. And that is a testament to the entrepreneurial spirit here and the support of small business that we have in Nacogdoches. The Texas Forest Country Partnership is our regional economic development organization, and they are doing great things through a partnership with the Temple Foundation. The medical community is something that we are strengthening this year and making sure that the ties between Memorial Hospital and Medical Center are functioning the way they should, and that we all are supporting our medical community as it goes through trying times, as are all medical communities in the country, to be honest. A new partner on this list is the Angelina Nacogdoches Area Manufacturing Partnership. I mentioned that just a few months ago in my semi-annual report, but that is something I'm very excited about, to see some of our manufacturing partners work together with their counterparts across the river, and also some very complex projects, like access to capital, and not small business loan access to capital, but access to very large amounts of capital through maybe venture capitalists and things like that, and bringing those opportunities to East Texas. And then, of course, our Nedco staff. Mary Frances Bradford and Ashley Morgan, complete phenomenal team, and I could not do what I do without them. So, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so I will not spend too much time on these slides unless you want me to stop on one of them. Please do. Our per capita income is currently at $19,815 per year. That is a 22% increase over 2009. Inflation can account for some of that increase. However, if you look at the rate of increase compared to the county and the state of Texas, we are increasing at a more rapid rate than the state of Texas. So, that is good news for us. And then also consider that we do have a very young populace, which will automatically decrease that per capita income, unfortunately. As far as unemployment, I've mentioned that just a few moments ago, we're doing very, very well with unemployment. Our summer numbers are traditionally a little bit higher, and I believe we hit 5% this most recent report. But through October, from October to June, it's a nine-month period. Six months, six of those months were the lowest unemployment rates I could find in any of the records available to us. So, that's great news. Sales tax. As with any economy, you're going to see peaks and valleys. There's a, over the last 25 years, our peaks and valleys are largely related to oil and gas. We appear to be on another upward trend. We think some of that is related to oil and gas activity, but it can't all be attributed to that. So, that is good news. We'll continue to work to bring businesses in Nacogdoches that keep those sales tax dollars here and limit our sales tax leakage. So, hopefully, that trend will continue upward. So, high school degrees. This is based on census data and not direct graduation rates. I use that because that's what site selectors would be looking at. They would be looking at census numbers. I suspect if we did utilize graduation rates from NISD and all of our county schools, that that number would actually be significantly higher. But again, it's on a slightly upward trend. College degrees, this is, I bring this up because it's the feather in our cap. As a college community, it's always nice to tell prospective employers and prospective businesses that we have quite a high number of college-educated adults. Some specific achievements. This year, Entrepreneurship Academy was a great success. It was actually a business accelerator program, as opposed to previous years, which was dedicated to folks who have never owned a business before. This one assisted existing businesses. I have to brag on our membership as a part of that program, and Mayor Brophy definitely assisted us in that program. We contact all of our Nedco members and ask them to help us facilitate that. And we have folks like Bill Elliott and William Fajardo come teach classes, and you really can't get any better expertise than having successful business members in your own community come teach how they got to where they are today. We have approximately 27 new businesses. I had an emailed conversation with Councilmember Moore about this today, and this unfortunately is a pretty unscientific number. We have, we have, a couple of ways we track that, and a lot of it is just visually, oh, there's a new business there. Or we look at sign permits or DBA filings. In the proposed Nedco budget, we are, for the next fiscal year, we are requesting some software that will help us track that better. We're hoping to have data that will automatic, that we can automatically populate that with. So, we'll start with a good list of businesses. And then, that software will also allow us to track our business development visits that Mary Frances goes on and feed that into this database of businesses, so that we can track business openings and closings better. I do feel like there is a net gain in businesses. One of the neatest ones is our addition of several food trucks. We, the city council adopted some amendments to our food truck ordinance, resulting in several new food trucks that you've seen around town. And those are a great gateway for restaurateurs to start off small and hopefully eventually make it into a brick-and-mortar business. Some other things that we completed this year are just some internal documents and plans to give Mary Frances and Ashley and myself more structure in our goal-setting and our project planning, and those are our business retention and expansion plan and our business attraction plan. So, the Storywrite Building next door, this was part of the SFA City Economic Development Committee. The Bright Foundation has purchased that building. We are developing ideas for the final use and the funding of the renovation of that building, but we are excited to see a change in ownership and some forward momentum on that building for the first time in a very long time. We will continue to partner with SFA on a grant. This is the third year of a grant to develop a new commercial kiwi crop. It has a potential to be a very high-value crop for Nacogdoches. Agriculture is, Nacogdoches is, one of Nacogdoches' most important industries, and diversifying our agriculture economy can really pay dividends in the future. Opportunity zones were quite a success for us. Nacogdoches was on the forefront of the opportunity zone designation. We fought to be designated, and we are currently waiting on the IRS to complete their rules before we will start to see those investors. But I can say, I've already started to get calls from people who are interested in the Nacogdoches community, because we are a designated opportunity zone. The industrial bond development process, I won't bore you with that process, but say it is a way to finance community development projects at a rate that typically ends up being slightly below market. Wasn't super important the last several years, because rates were so low. As we see interest rates rise, this will become a little bit more important. We launched a new website and some new marketing materials, which helps us to continue to respond to site selectors and develop a means to attract attention to Nacogdoches for retail, industrial, and our professional services. So, at the next meeting, I will provide a program of work for the 2018-2019 year and identify how we can work together for, to continue to grow the Nacogdoches economy. And with that, I will gladly step to the side for any community comment.
Certainly. Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment about this presentation? Okay. Hearing none. Council members, any comments or questions for Ms. Philpott?
I'd really have to come in. I think this is all related to what I'm going to ask about. The quality of employment, the type of industry that would benefit from quality employment. Are, as graduating college students here in Nacogdoches, SFA, are we producing the type of graduation students that new industry, that would like to come to East Texas, would benefit from that graduation?
I believe that we are, and I believe in conversations with Superintendent Fraley that some potential changes in additional vocational training, I think, will continue to improve that. And also, in meeting with all of the county school districts, those county superintendents, just about every single one also mentioned adding vocational training, and not just NISD students, but just about every student in the community. As far as SFA students go, they are graduating, a large portion are our teachers and nurses that we're hoping to retain in our community, and foresters as well.
You know, when we talked the other day, and I asked you about the median age of the population, I was surprised how low it was. I thought it would have been much higher. And it's almost at the median age that's, young people are getting out looking for jobs, graduate from college and looking for jobs. And that's why I would, I'm thinking, like tech center, I mean, they would, that would be very beneficial for that age group that's in the rural East Texas.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think establishment of a tech center that would allow training, not just for some of our high school students, but specifically for adults after they graduate from high school, where they can get certifications and do specific training for our industries, I think that's vital to East Texas.
Existing industry and the customers of the existing industries and suppliers, and that would be offset from whoever supplied that business, parts or whatever, that they would have an interest in moving to East Texas?
Correct. Correct. If we've got a supplier, say that Pilgrim's Pride uses, it would make sense for them to locate here, nearby one of their very large facilities.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Could you tell us how the software you're going to buy works?
Yes. And one caveat, that does still have to be approved by the Nedco Board. Hopefully, I'm at their meeting on Thursday. It is an economic development suite, which essentially is, at its very core, it's a database of businesses, where we can track everything from very simple contact information all the way to survey trends. Whenever Mary Frances or myself goes out on a business development visit, we're going to ask very similar questions each time. Are you hiring? What types of problems are you encountering when you're hiring? Are you looking to expand? The software would allow us to input that data, so that I can show in 2017, our manufacturers were hiring, or our manufacturers were not. Whereas, right now, we're unfortunately running off of Excel spreadsheets and Word documents, and it really makes tracking that data difficult. It would also allow us a way to communicate directly with our members and with our businesses, kind of like a constant contact email newsletter service. So, it does a couple of different things.
And so, basically, it's a database, and y'all will fill it up with information as you go out, and that's the hard part.
Yes.
Getting the information.
Yes, it is. And the possibility exists of purchasing some data to populate that from someone like Dunn and Bradstreet.
But just talking to people is the big thing.
Yes.
And the other, you know, the kiwi fruit, is that a plant that requires a lot of water?
It is not a massive amount of water when you're comparing it to, like, almonds. That's always the traditional water hog. I don't think it is terribly different from some of our other East Texas crops. I would be lying if I told you exactly how much it uses. I know it does require irrigation. I'd be happy to send you more information. I unfortunately am not super educated about kiwis myself. They do have a Kiwi Day coming up in a couple of weeks at SFA that I think would explain a lot of things like that.
Okay. Thanks.
Your business development visits, they're more than just collecting information.
Absolutely.
Can you tell us a little bit about?
Sure. They are a lot about building relationships, a lot about building trust, so that if a business does have a problem, they trust us enough to come to us and ask for assistance. It is, some of it is simply communicating what Nedco does, and communicating even to just our business community that Nacogdoches is open for business, Nacogdoches is easy to do business in, and working through those miscommunications and those misconceptions that so often exist in a community.
Okay. Great. Well, you have almost, have you completed your first year?
Yes.
You've hit the ground running.
Year and a half.
And I love the way you all have reorganized some of the things that you've done, and you have some new inventive ideas that have been really exciting to see start coming to fruition.
Thank you.
So, thank you, and thank your staff for us also.
Thank you. I'll see you in two weeks.
Okay. Item number seven, receive annual report from Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful. Ms. Rudisell.
How are y'all?
Doing very well. Welcome.
I am the new director of Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful. My name is Katie Rudisell. I started two weeks before Blueberry Festival. Just to give you a little synopsis, so I have not been on the job all that long, so a lot of my data that I have here is compiled from our board members. Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful's mission statement is to enhance our community by encouraging individual responsibility in three main areas. One is litter prevention, second is waste reduction, and the third is beautification. The City of Nacogdoches has graciously provided funding each year for KMB to assist us in fulfilling this mission. In return, KMB has agreed to provide volunteer support and technical education and expertise to promote and assist with recycling programs, further beautification efforts within the community, and to help educate the public on our recycling opportunities, litter reduction and illegal dumping. Our necessary staff includes me. I'm a part-time employee. Part of my job description is to attend the Keep Texas Beautiful Conference, occasionally Keep America Beautiful, regional trainings on insights and programs across the state that are related to recycling, beautification. that are related to recycling, beautification, and then nonprofit management, and other related topics. Our volunteer support is what holds us up. We have a board of directors that includes 12 active volunteers. It is an active working board. Each member of our board serves on a subsidiary committee and takes their hands and gets them wet, what they like to do. The technical education expertise of the members of our board include, one of our members is a member of the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, and another member is a senior staff member at SFA Gardens. We draw a lot of our support for the community, and then we do our best to give back. We work with a lot of city departments. One is the public library, second is the Central appraisal district, third is Public Works, fourth is Park and Recreation. We have also worked in conjunction with over 20 local Nacogdoches businesses throughout the 17, 18-year. And then within the Nacogdoches community, we have involved between 20 and 25, I was getting conflicting, so it's somewhere in there, community organizations. We also work in conjunction with Stephen F. Austin State University within their departments and with their student organizations. We've worked with over 10 SFA departments, and multiple student organizations have worked with Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful, both in volunteers and litter abatement. One of the places where we are really excited to talk about is our new recycling baler. We received a private donation to assist in the purchase of the recycling baler. It is set to be operational later this calendar year, and it will allow the city to process end-market recycled items rather than using funds to haul them to Lefkina. We also have Tech Cycle Saturday. It is a collection of recyclable electronics at a structured point within Nacogdoches. Sometimes it's across from the farmer's market, and then other times we will be by a recycle alley, depending on what is going on within the community and where we feel like it's a better place to be. The total pounds of recycled electronics since 2016 is in excess of three tons. In regards to beautification of the city, we participate in Make a Difference Day, and it is, we coordinate volunteers from SFA and within the community to participate in one of the largest nationwide service days. Volunteers this past year assisted in adopted highway cleanup, the Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful Tree Farm cleanup, where they went and pulled weeds and organized the little trees, seedlings, there we go, and then bulb planting within the dog park. Nacogdoches Blooms is one of our longest-running fundraisers, has been running for over 20 years. The bulbs are planted throughout several parks in downtown, at Almangam Airport, and various points around the loop. We also have a program that is the Landscape Leadership Awards, and it's a quarterly award that is rewarded to businesses for providing beautification elements to their business and business fronts. Our tree nursery is maintained by Keep Nacogdoches, Keep Nac beautiful and our volunteers, and the seedlings are located in, not in the landfill, there is a location within the landfill where they're located. Once the seedlings are large enough, Keep Nac beautiful donates the trees to be planted in public areas such as city parks, buildings, schools, also in churches and new habitat here for humanity homes. We also have an annual tree sale, which allows community members to purchase trees at a nominal fee. Litter abatement, this is the part that I know the most about. Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful is responsible for litter abatement during two events downtown. One is the Blueberry Festival, the other one is the Nine Flights Festival. Keep Nac Beautiful takes over 100 of our collapsible litter bins, strategically places them throughout downtown, and the board members as well as volunteers also work throughout the day from 5:30 in the morning until 7 o'clock at night, sometimes 8 o'clock, to get all the litter at the Blueberry Festival collected. This year, we had over 30 volunteers that were staggered throughout the day and collected 66 cubic yards of litter during the Blueberry Festival. We have an adopted highway, and it is on the loop in between Star and Highway 7. We hold four litter cleanups per year, and we utilize community volunteers as well as our board. We have a litter lending tool program, which allows us to lend out our boxes throughout the year, our litter boxes throughout the year, and then we provide trash bags based on your predicted count. And it allows for all, any Nacogdoches community member to get their litter collected in a clean and efficient way, and you don't have to worry about if there's trash bags, if there's not, just pick up the boxes and bring them back. In 2018, so far, we have lent out over 300 litter bins, and that's not including Blueberry Festival. Over 100 are reserved for community events in the fall. We've had over 17,000 participants attend the events where the litter bins are, and over 350 volunteers that have worked with taking and hauling off trash. With our education program, we have an education committee, and they are responsible for educational opportunities within schools, and then also our events like Tech Cycle Saturday, Blueberry Festival, Earth Day, and Arbor Day. Our budget. Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful is grateful for city funding it receives to support our program and hope to continue this great partnership in years to come. And that is really all that I have. I'm going to step to the side if anybody has any questions.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone that would like to say anything about Keep Nac Beautiful? Okay. Oh, yes, Mr. Phillips.
I frequently find myself in this position. Thank you. Somebody needs to stand up and applaud organizations that contribute to the quality of life in Nacogdoches. Thank you again.
Counsel, any questions?
Well, illegal dumping, is that just public awareness, or is that something we do to prevent, or help at least tone it down somewhat?
We, I know that things that we do as a board, we have flyers that we have at the library, and we've given out to, we give out at different events, and then we've given out to local businesses. We've also put them in the new NISD employee bags and the new SFA employee bags that talks about our recycling center, or recycling drop points, and then what actually illegal dumping is, because a lot of people are not educated on that knowledge. And then also, they bring it to our schools and teach the kids what you can recycle, what cannot be recycled, and what is supposed to be thrown away and what is not.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question is based along the same line, is I drive out Press Road a lot, and it's always trashed out. I mean, people literally just drive, throw their trash out, a bag of trash, and then the mower will run over it, and it gets spread out, mattresses, all sorts of trash like that. I think what it is, is people that probably can't afford, you know, pickup at their house, or they live in a rural area and they can't afford it, and they don't want to pay to go to dump. Is there any way that we could look into having, like dumpsters located in areas that are?
Drop points.
Drop points, where, you know, instead of throwing it on the side of the road, you drive it a little farther, and you put it in a dumpster, and then, you know, Kerry comes and picks it up once a week or twice a week.
That's something that I can take to our board, for sure.
I think a lot of people just choose to do it because it's more cost-effective to throw it on the side of the road than go to the dump.
Well, thank you for your presentation very much. I noticed Cheryl was here. Do you have any other board members?
We have Mike Keller.
Okay, great.
And that's it. We have some members that serve on some of our committees.
Committees.
Here, but.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, congratulations. I wish you the best of luck in your new position, and please thank the board for their work also on our behalf. Agenda item number eight, fire and emergency planning update. It's our Fire Marshal, Mike Brown. Good evening.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Mike Brown, I'm your Fire Marshal. I was asked to speak tonight about how the Nacogdoches Fire Department plans for emergencies. Basically, Nacogdoches Fire and Rescue serves to protect the life and property of our citizens in three basic ways. Those ways are public education, prevention, and control. Tonight, we're going to focus on prevention. Basically, there are four purposes of a prevention program. Those are to reduce the frequency and severity of emergency incidents that occur, additionally to reduce the injury or loss associated with those incidents, and also, the last one, which I'm rather fond of, is to enhance firefighter safety in the event of responding to an emergency. Our prevention program consists of basically four planks, investigation, public education, inspections, and planning. Investigations consist of investigators on scene who investigate every single fire that occurs in this city. If it's a very simple fire, a pot of beans left on the stove that causes a small amount of damage, it may be the company officer on the responding engine who investigates and finds out the cause of the fire, documents and goes forward. As the intricacy of the, our complexity of the fire increases, we might call in additional staff. Up to your most serious fires, we have large loss of property, or unfortunately, loss of life, where we would have many eyes, many investigators following up on those fires to determine the cause, with an eye to preventing those in the future. Public education consists mostly of public outreach programs. Our main focus really is Fire Prevention Month, which is the month of October. We have a dedicated team who will visit basically every school, every elementary school within the county, and go over some fire safety lessons with the children there. We additionally, those teams are supported by shift personnel, staff and the engines will come out and help those guys present. Additionally, we reach out, and are reached out to by homeschool groups, and those children also receive the same education. I'd say we do a pretty good job of reaching almost every school-aged child in the county. Inspections, that consists of basically three different areas. Starts with plans review for new construction, that's a technical code review, to make sure that new construction coming in meets the adopted fire code, that all the fire service features that are needed for the occupancy type are present, and carried out properly for the type of occupancy. The next step is code compliance inspections for those new construction projects. Once the ground's been broken, and buildings are coming up, and the fire service features are being installed, we inspect those facilities to make sure that the appurtenances are properly installed to national standards and our adopted fire code. The third facet of inspections is the technical code inspection of existing structures. That's where a certified fire inspector goes to commercial occupancy in town, and does a very thorough fire inspection, looking for fire and life safety violations aimed at preserving life and property for our citizens. The final plank, and the one I'll be spending most of the time on tonight, is planning. This is kind of the foundation of the program. It is, it's really pre-planning. We seek to identify and mitigate areas of concern and make them go away, make them non-areas of concern. Planning begins with tactical surveys. These are performed, these are surveys, tours, if you will, performed in cooperation with local owners and managers of occupancies. These are, under normal operational conditions, are performed monthly. These are all hands-on tours. Each shift goes en masse to an occupancy and tours it. Each shift has shift commanders, so there'd be three, there are three shifts, there'll be three concurrent visits to this occupancy. Some of the places we might visit are those with large potential loss of life or property, including hospitals, nursing homes. Stephen F. Austin has a number of buildings, as you might imagine, large multifamily residences, large assembly occupancies, large educational occupancies with the potential for tremendous loss of life. Churches, again, large assembly and industry, just some of those, by the very nature of their operations, are hazardous, and we want to be as well-prepared in those occupancies as we can. Basically, the goal is familiarization with those buildings and systems, to allow firefighters, every firefighter from the newest to the oldest, to see those buildings, lay eyes on them, and to learn. The next facet of preparedness is pre-emergency plans. Now, these are somewhat similar to tactical surveys, but they are performed annually on almost all commercial buildings. These are conducted by shift firefighters and crews. Each crew on each shift has a district, and they are responsible for visiting these occupancies annually. The goal, again, being eyes on, to visit these occupancies, get familiar with them, make contact with the citizens, identify building systems and hazards that are needed for firefighting. The main purpose of these plans, again, is to identify hazards, are there large amounts of hazardous materials in occupancy? Are there dangers, as I refer to in industry, that are just due to routine operations? Is there a 20-foot-long saw blade that's swinging in the dark that we need to know about? It allows us to familiarize ourselves, to get floor plans down. We locate building systems in the event of emergency. How do we cut off gas? How do we cut off electricity? Something as simple as there's a water break, where's the water cut off so that we're not dumping thousands of gallons down the street? Additionally, we identify contacts. We want to know, we'd like to know who owns the property, who owns the building, who runs it, who manages it? Who are we going to call at 3 o'clock in the morning when the fire alarm's going off and we don't want to break down their door, because we don't see any smoke or flames? That's the time that we gather this information. Additionally, we identify egress points. Again, as a firefighter, I'm near and dear to someone, how do we get in? Most importantly, if everything's going badly, how do we get out? These pre-plans are conducted on an iPad. This is a screenshot from the iPad. This is an app, GIS-based app, that was put together by our engineering staff. They were extraordinarily helpful. All of our pre-plans are kept on this. Each apparatus has one of these iPads, so every crew has access to this. This is just an overview. In fact, this is 1112 North Street. Mr. Bray is probably rather familiar with this one. We enter the data on the right-hand side, update it annually. Let's scroll down just a little bit. As you can see on the, under the details, in the middle of the night, this allows us to figure out rough, if a whole thing's on fire, what kind of water flow we need, how many gallons per minute we need to put on the fire. We can come up with that number based on building length and width, and the stories of the building involved. Middle of the night, building electric shut off, you'll see it's marked a C on there. We, to simplify our location finding in a fire, or when responding to an emergency, we call the front of the building the alpha side, A-side, moving in a clockwise fashion, Bravo, Charlie, Delta. So in the middle of the night, we're trying, not trying to go, hey, it's on the south side, and it's pitch black, and I'm turned around, and I don't know where the south side is. I could probably keep up with four sides, I have that many fingers. But it's an excellent program, it's updated constantly. Engineering's been phenomenal in helping us keep this data going, get it up and running. And additionally, in fact, our technical code inspections will be moving to a very similar system, hopefully this fall, that will kind of mirror this. How complete is this program? We have, to date, performed over 1,200 pre-emergency plans. Those are all on those iPads. All that data is there, we could punch it up in the middle of the night on the side of the road, wherever we need it. It's a game changer. Thank you again. I'll be happy to open up for public comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone that has a comment about fire prevention? Yes, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. It's a very informative presentation, but I noticed that what you pull up on the iPad does not include a floor plan of the building.
No, sir. No, sir, not as of yet.
Is that something you're looking forward to getting?
We have just integrated some additional new software, and we hope to have that, yes, to be able to scan those documents in, so that they're, that they're to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Counsel, any questions?
I just have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
What is the, y'all allow, and can you provide sufficient firefly, fire flow through a six-inch water line? I mean...
Depending on... Yes, sir.
What is the, y'all allow, and can you provide sufficient firefly through, fire flow through a six-inch water line? I mean...
Depending on the occupancy. Sometimes absolutely yes, also depending on the age of the line, encrustation of the line, depends on the occupancy and how much the fire flow is called for. But sometimes absolutely yes, sir.
Okay, so we don't require, I mean, I believe we require six-inch lines throughout the city as far as new construction?
I cannot speak to that. I can speak to water flow requirements to new construction. I don't know the requirements throughout the city.
And what's the requirement for, say, a house? Is it a single-family house?
I'm sure it's the absolute minimum. I...
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm trusting my memory here, but probably, probably 125 to 200 gallons per minute, which is going to be very easily supported by almost anything.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank Mr. Phillips for that question about the floor plan, because that's, I was...
It would be very helpful, yes, sir.
That's something I wanted to know. But the inspections, that's just strictly commercial?
It's commercial, but commercial also includes commercial residential, if you will, multifamily homes, apartment complexes, hotels. And upon request, we will inspect anybody. A non-punitive inspection, if someone would like us to look through their home and give them recommendations on changes to make their home more safe, we're glad to do it. We do it all the time, in fact.
And I would, I guess my question was, is there any program in place to maybe help the elderly? Because we still have a lot of elderly which face eaters and et cetera in this community.
Yes, sir. We have, shoot, we've been helping install smoke detection in those homes for years. People just need to reach out to us, homeowners, call us, and we'll be happy to come out and install a smoke detection. And again, the inspection program is offered out there at any time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine: Consider Approval of Design-Build Contract with Exhibit Concepts, Inc. for Permanent Exhibits at Nacogdoches Railroad Depot. Jessica Sal?
Mayor, Counsel, Jessica Sal, Assistant Historic Sites Manager. Excuse me. I'm here today about the proposed design-build contract with Exhibit Concepts. This is for our beautiful Nacogdoches Railroad Depot, right down the street at 101 Old Tyler Road. It's a great 1911 building that we're very proud of, and up to date, it's only had temporary exhibits, which are still wonderful, but they consist of mainly poster exhibits, exhibit cases that are filled with whatever depot artifacts we have. But this contract would allow us to put in permanent professionally-designed exhibits that really showcase the history of this building. The process to select the design firm is pretty expensive. It started in February after help from many city departments putting together requests for proposals, trying to get museum people to fit in a standard form is a little hard sometimes. But we sent out that request for proposals to 24 different companies, mainly Texas-based that we had contacts with, and then several throughout the United States that we'd met at conferences or had reached out to us. We had a lot of great questions and excitement about it, and then at our closing in April, we ended up receiving three responses: Exhibit Concepts, Museum Fabrication, and 2020 Exhibits. All of those RFP responses were then reviewed by two city staff and two non-city staff. They were scored based on the criteria we sent out with the RFP that the exhibit companies knew about. Those are scored, and from the scores and the quality proposals, we selected Exhibit Concepts, Inc., based on what they sent to us. Exhibit Concepts is a company based out of Ohio. They have, they're celebrating their 40-year anniversary in business, doing museum fabrication, exhibit fabrication. They have over 131 employees that specialize in exhibit fabrication, graphic design, artifact mountmaking, which is something that I can't do, exhibit fabrication, and then installation. They've done a couple of projects that really are in line with what we're hoping to do at the Railroad Depot. They recently did the Bradford Railroad Museum, which obviously correlates very closely with what we're trying to do. It won Ohio Museum Association's Best Exhibit in 2017. They do a lot of work here in Texas. They recently did the Red River Valley Museum, and they've also worked with me personally and the Historic Sites Department and the city of Nacogdoches to do the Durs Taylor Historic House and Gardens Visitor Center Exhibits. They did those in 2011, I believe. No, I have to go back and check. I feel like it was a long time ago, but it wasn't that long. So, they did that as well. We're excited because this recent, these recent projects really speak to what we're trying to do. If this contract is approved tonight, it goes on to a six-step design process where it includes our interpretive planning phase, and that includes a big discovery section that will include town hall meetings, get-togethers at the depot, with the general public, so they can tell us what they remember about the depot, what they'd like to see in there, if they have artifacts, if they have family that maybe worked at the Railroad Depot. We can include all of that information in our future design. So, it'd be public outreach meetings, online polls, social media stuff, however we can get people involved. Once that is kind of completed, we'll take all that information and all the artifacts we have and put it into a final design, which is reviewed by countless people, and that has us go over, you know, the grammar and everything that's in the exhibit panels, making sure artifacts will fit in proposed cases. Once that's completed, we go on the construction documentation, which is the nuts and bolts and measurements, then to the exhibit fabrication, which is mainly done in Ohio. Everything's shipped down here. Then we go to installation and then maintenance and support. This company's also great about giving us follow-up information. They gave me a huge booklet last time on, if something breaks, here's who to call, here's how to fix it, here's how we clean it. So, that was immensely helpful. I reference it a lot today. If all of this goes according to plan, our estimated completion date is April 2019. It's not necessarily a hard and fast date. The first two elements of our design process, the public outreach, and then the final design, sometimes take a little longer than planned. If we get a ton of information that we have to sift through, or if we're having to pull information out of people, it can take a little longer. So, that's the plan right now. We hope with this contract, we'll end up with a great exhibit that talks about the entire history of the Nacogdoches Railroad Depot, the people that traveled through it, the groups that used it, and really how it changed Nacogdoches and our whole economy. So, we're very excited about this, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Is there any public comment about the exhibit, proposed exhibit for the Railroad Depot? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, any questions or comments? Outstanding.
Well, thank you.
I get excited about this sort of thing.
We're very, this is a big thing in the museum world, so we're very excited about it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We do need to approve that contract, though, don't we? So, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the design-bill contract with Exhibit Concept for our permanent exhibits at Nacogdoches Railroad Depot.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Number 10: Consider an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1748-9-17 appropriating various amounts in accordance with budget adopted for ensuing fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018. Carrie Walker.
Hello.
Good evening.
Carrie Walker, Mayor, Counsel. Carrie Walker, Public Works Manager, and I'm here tonight to ask for a budget amendment to purchase a new front-load garbage truck. As you can see, the pretty picture. There on the next slide, you can see that it is replacing a 2012 front-load. On July 26, this particular truck experienced a failure to the transmission and the packing assembly, requiring a significant cost to this truck. This truck was scheduled to be replaced in October of 2018 upon approval of the new budget and Public Works, which had requested two new trucks for that budget cycle. Typically, our trucks, we keep six to seven years, and this is the oldest truck in our commercial fleet that picks up our business and our commercial customers. As you may be aware or seen on Facebook, I think several people did, in the past week, we've not only had this truck break, but we've had another truck catch on fire less than a week later, Old Tyler Road and Austin Street. So, we've suffered quite a bit last week. I would like to say that our sanitation guys have done a remarkable job keeping up with the demand and our daily commitments to our businesses. They have, they have worked several extra hours to make that happen, but they are continuing the service, and I can say they've done a marvelous job. Upon approval of this, the 2018-19 budget, we would amend that so that we'd only purchase one truck next year instead of two, and I would be happy to answer any questions after any public comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak to purchasing a new garbage truck? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, any questions?
Did you mention the price?
Yes, for the new truck, $300,600. And that is a buyboard purchase.
And this was scheduled to be...
Yes, sir.
We don't sell these, right? We don't resell these?
We put them on Gov. deals, and they go to a public auction. Yes.
I'd just like to tell you, thank you for giving me a tour of your department.
Oh, you're certainly welcome.
And I was really impressed with the, the automatic grease system that you had on the other thing, because that's something that can get overlooked, so that's...
Yes.
A really important maintenance addition, I guess you would say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chair will entertain a motion for...
Move approval of item number 10.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded for item number 10 as presented. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Item number 11: Consider Approval of Contract for Professional Engineering Services with KSA Engineers, Inc. for Development of a New Hydraulic Water Distribution System Model. Mr. Bartlett, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Steve Bartlett, City Engineer. I have tonight for your consideration the acceptance of a contract. It is with KSA Engineers in the amount of $60,000 lump sum for the development of a new hydraulic water distribution model. Now, this item came before you early in the year, and so it was tabled at the suggestion of Councilman Moore for further study, and that study included basically looking at a comparison of doing this work in-house versus outsourcing it. So, in working with Mr. Jeffers, he asked us to look at a 10-year projection to do that, which we have prepared and was in your packets. Now, again, just to remind you, this water system model is just a big computer program that helps us look at all of our distribution system and what advantages does it have and why do we need it. Basically, the model will run scenarios for us. It'll study impacts of future development. It helps us point out problem areas in our system, like low-pressure areas. Larissa Philpott stopped by today to visit and had noticed, of course, that this was on the agenda. We were talking about several upcoming potential projects, and, you know, she reminded me how important this was even to Nedco so that we could get an industry that may want to come in, and we'll have the ability to look at what that impact would be to our water system, or what the cost would be to provide water that they would need. So, for us, it's also a future capital projection, business development issue, as well as a problem solver. So, we've been without a model for a few years. The model was using software that could no longer be run, and so we have just let it sit still. So, we have decided, my many list of things, to try to reconstitute this this year. So, I've come to you with this contract. Do you want to speak a little bit about the 10-year projections? The first year is the heavy year. We're either going to pay KSA Engineers $60,000 to develop this model and hand us that product, or we're going to spend some money to purchase the model, do trainings, and, you know, in the first year. And then, as well as that, is we found out that we can't do that. About 700 hours for us, estimated. And so, included in that comparison was the purchase of a new full-time employee, and I say purchase, and I laugh. But basically, to get a new full-time employee. Now, there was some confusion, and I apologize for that, but it won't take that employee full-time in years 2 through 10. But like any economic model that we developed from Mr. Jeffers, if we're going to do new curb-edging programs with Public Works, we have to look at whether we have to hire folks, whether it's a full-time work or not, and we may benefit by having them yet do other tasks in the future. But the budget that you look at and approve will be impacted by this new employee. So, the reason that it shows $800,000 is primarily significant differences, of course, this new full-time employee. So, it is not full-time work for them in years 2 through 10, so I want to make that very clear. So, be happy after public comment to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this agenda item? Mr. Phillips, please.
I see KSA Engineering on just about every report that comes before the council. Do we have no other engineering companies that can provide information, that can actually provide a true outside opinion? Because for the most part, what I see is KS Engineering feeding back at a significant expense what the engineering department of Nacogdoches has presented to them. And I would hope that any contract coming in from KSA Engineering will be looked at with a great deal of scrutiny to ensure that Nacogdoches is actually getting some value for the expenditure of this money, because if our engineering department is spot-on, as virtually all of these reports indicate, then why are we bothering to have an outside opinion added to that at significant expense? I would also, from that, have a suspicion that maybe not always are we getting the best advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Counsel, questions or comments for Mr. Bartlett?
I, I submitted several questions, and I didn't get a response, right? Then I submitted several questions to you and...
We issued your response on Monday to all your questions, and it went to all of Counsel.
For the water model?
Yes, sir.
Three pages?
Yeah, three pages of response. We worked all day Monday on that, Counsel.
Well, then I missed it. I apologize for that. Well, I'll go back and look for it, because I didn't, I didn't see it.
Mayor, man.
Yeah. I don't want to go over this. I mean, okay, we could go over it if you want, but I'm not going to support it. And so, what you may want to do is table it until the rest of the people get here so it can get passed. And I do apologize for missing that. I'll have to go back through my email and see if it's there. But in the general, the general feeling is I think this should be done in-house, and that's, that's, that's what I believe, that we should work on this in-house. And there's a lot to it, and if you want, we could go through it, but I'm not going to support it. So, if you'd rather wait to go through it whenever everybody's here, we can do that, or we can go through it now. I mean, I'm familiar with all these questions, so it's not... What do you want to do? I mean, it's up to you.
Well, I, I think, we pulled it once before for additional consideration, and I feel that we've had adequate amount of time to consider. Mr. Bolden, do you have any?
I mean, information I received, I'm okay to go through it now.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, okay, so we'll just go through some of these. I'll be glad to do it. So, when was the original date done? We don't know. How much was the city spent? Unknown. Does the city own the data? We do not have the data files from our model, which, first of all, I think what we should say about a model is, if you, if you picture a water model, it is a series of rows and a Excel spreadsheet, and it simulates how the system works, and then there's a graphical interchange. But at its heart, it's a very simple model. It's probably two, two weeks of undergraduate hydraulics and hydrology. So, there's not that much to it. I mean, it's detailed. It's a lot of work, and, but it's not complicated. Is, and the question, is it the city's opinion that the water development, distribution model was calibrated correctly and accurate as of its last run? As of last run, the staff did not know of any significant... Okay, let's, first of all, we don't have the data. Is that right? In other words, the information that we paid, that we were using to do this model, it no longer exists?
My response to you is, we didn't have that, the data file in our files. However, KSA said, "You're welcome to it at any time." What I explained in those comments to you was that it's in a proprietary format. In other words, the software vendor stores their data that's been entered and massaged over time in that model in a format that we can't export in just a standard comma, separated values. And they do that generally so that you can't use another vendor's model with that data. So, it's a typical...
And what was, what was the original software?
The original software was H2O NET.
Okay, and you're saying that, that they hid, hid that information so it could not be exported, and there's no way to get to it with it as a common denominator? and there's no way to get to it with it as a common unlimited file?
Yeah. Councilman, when we first started this, my question was, can we export the data? And, like you said, get a big spreadsheet of information, which is nothing but line numbers and nodes and pipes. And the answer was no, they have no way to export that where we can commonly transfer it to another program. So, this has to be rebuilt.
So, this is going to be a fairly long discussions, because I'm going to answer a lot of questions here. So, what we have, will you go through the process by which we're going to rebuild the model?
Yes. And regardless of whether we were heading down this path or not, I think we're in a model rebuild period, because it's been so long since we've updated the model. So, to me, it's not merely a rebuild. I mean, not an update, it is a full rebuild. But, yes, the process that we're going to go through in this case is we will share our system files, primarily from GIS, which is a graphical representation of our water lines, along with data that's attached to that, as you well know. And then, they will use that as almost a heads-up way to put in lines that they will have in the model. Now, the reason we don't, that GIS doesn't directly go into the model, and there's explanations in there for you as well, but is, for example, I used Inwood Lane as an example. It's a 900-foot-long dead-end cul-de-sac street. And on our GIS model, that water line's broken into 17 segments in that 900 feet, with multiple tags for pipe types and things. And it had to do partially with the horizontal alignment, and it had to do where we'd located it. But, in a water model scenario, we'll have one line for that whole street with a node at each end. So, what will happen is our input, KSA or whoever we use, will bring up a picture of our water lines and go, "Okay, that's Inwood Street. We're going to just put one line in there in the model." So, they'll use it as almost a trace-over tool to expedite putting that date in. Basically, they're going to enter pipes, pipe material information, sizes, and they're going to set nodes where all the pipes intersect. And this builds a network, if you can envision that. And with that network, then, we can put demands, which are basically what you use at your water meter, or what Pilgrim's Pride uses at their water meter. And so, we simulate the amount of water that we are using or pulling out of the system, and then we find out how the system reacts when we do that. Pressure drops, or whatever. So, in a residential scenario, we would average, all the houses on Inwood Street would be put as one demand, and we would use an average residential demand, because we don't model for every meter, which is why Inwood's broken up into 17 pieces, because we have a lot of meters, and that's the way GIS is drawn. So, and I can go in a lot more detail. I've been modeling for 30 years, and I'd be happy to talk about it.
Why, when we, I looked briefly at our GIS data, and it's, like you said, it's very segmented. What was the purpose of doing all the GIS, spent all the time to put all those lines in? If, I mean, are they just there for visual reference, or?
And I think, and wasn't here when that was started, Councilman, but I think I can speculate on those reasons, is basically, this has all started out as a mapping tool, and it's still our primary mapping tool that we use in the city. And we now extend that to the general public that use, they look up water lines and sewer lines every day. And I think the intent there was to draw some maps that simulated where those lines were and looked correct on a map. And if it's in a curve, they're going to be in a bunch of little cords to simulate that. So, I think it all started with, how are we going to map this? If you zoomed in and looked at those, you're going to find that some of those segments don't even actually touch. Well, whether there should have been some other pre-planning 15 years ago or not, this was all started with our association with SFA and the Hughes Center and things, and how all that developed are questions I can't answer to you. Other than it was a graphical representation and a map, it wasn't literally a database that we're going to build a water model off of.
Well, I could go through all of this, but the bottom line is, I believe that this is, this is the way I think we should do it. I would prefer to do it is, what we need to model is we need to understand how to connect our water wells, right? And we need to understand how to extend service into areas that are developing and need future water services. So, what we need is basically a model of the very large pipes, maybe 16 inches and up. We have 36-inch, 24-inch, 16-inch. We have our reservoirs, we have our pumps, we have our wells, we have our hydrants. And if, I think the best approach would be to work and find a way to do this in-house, because it's not critical that we do it immediately. We develop the expertise in-house by starting out with a skeletal model, starting with the 36-inch lines, connect them, and then go down to, you know, maybe a 30-inch line and, you know, just build it out and continue to build it out. And we don't need to model 4-inch lines, because that's just an over, I think it's too much detail for the analysis that the model is going to be used to provide. Because really, what we're going to do is we're saying, "We're going to run a line from here. Do we need a 16-inch line, or do we need a 30-inch line?" That's the question we're going to be asking. And we don't need to do a model that is so detailed and so expensive, and then we don't have the in-house expertise, and then we, once again, are at the mercy of an engineering company whose software doesn't work anymore. But, we keep it in-house, and we're constantly upgrading and doing it, and you're looking at, you quote, 50 hours a year for, once the model is built. And that's almost, you know, somebody can just do that when they don't have anything else to do. So, my vote would be to do it in-house and develop that expertise and do it on an incremental basis, kind of an as-needed basis, so that we only do the large-scale pipes and then work smaller and smaller as we need. So, that's what I would, that's what I would support.
Our vision is different, Councilman, and so I disagree with that.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Is this KSA at one-time charge?
Yes.
Is KSA the only one that we request the price?
No, we looked at four engineers. Well, we don't, we cannot request prices under law.
I mean, well, yeah.
Right. But, we literally solicited four engineers, reviewed four engineers. KSA, they were all scored. KSA scored the highest, and so we moved forward and came to you with this contract. So, we did look at four other engineers. We do have other engineers that work for us. KSA's been in the limelight lately between centrifuges and this. And so, but we currently have contracts totaling in hundreds of thousands of dollars with 215 Consultants, Sean Bergen-Polk and KSA, all three working for us right now, as well as one small firm in Austin, who's doing a little treatment plant study for me. So, we're using a variety of others.
Can you mention a part-time employee, where that would be for the full year?
No, no, sir. What I really proposed in the cost comparison was that if we do this, we do not have the time and resources in-house, and so we would need to hire another full-time employee. However, after the first year, they would, you know, be working part-time on the model, as Councilman said, and would have other duties. But, you needed to see that there was a fiscal impact to us doing this in-house, because we can't do it without the additional staff. Did that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, right. But, once this model is provided to us by KSA, any add-ons? Who does the add-ons? KSA or the in-house?
Sure. We, well, the way the contract's written is basically, we will own the model data, and so we can carry that and go to another consultant. We can go purchase the software ourselves and run it, and, of course, that would come with having to get training and other things. So, basically, we've asked them to, for $60,000 fee, they're going to prepare the model, field-check it, they go out in the field and measure pressures and twist the knobs and adjust it, and hand us a completed model package that we own. Now, we can then go to them, and it's not in this contract, and say, "Would you run a scenario for a new industry that's coming on the outside of town?" Or, like a call I got this morning, is we have super-low pressures and central heights on a 2-inch line, and we're trying to figure out where that's coming from, and I would use models to help me model the tanks and what's going on. I'm just saying, we would use those at those detailed levels.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do see the email, and I apologize.
No.
It was sent yesterday morning at 7:08. I apologize for that. I just missed it.
That's right.
Okay. So, this is for approval of a contract. Chair will entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for professional engineering service with KSA Engineering for development of a new hydraulic water distribution system.
Okay. And I guess I will second it. Any new discussion?
No, none.
Okay. Then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Item number 12, reconsider bid awarding contract for $565,500 to purchase new centrifuge for surface water treatment plant. Mr. Moore?
This is an item from our last meeting, where we were asked to approve a contract to purchase a new centrifuge. We heard the presentation, asked some questions, got some responses from Steve. And I asked, at that time, if we could get a second opinion, because I didn't feel that there was enough information to make this, to make this decision. So, the council voted against that. And nonetheless, Mike, my friend who works with centrifuges, came up, and we went out there and we reviewed it. And then, I wrote a bunch of questions to Steve, 17 questions that he graciously responded to. I know it took a lot of time, and I really appreciate that, Steve. And in addition, he provided a memo, letter, a letter memo from KSA Engineering dated May 5, 2017, which outlined how we should, basically, get a new centrifuge. So, that's kind of the background. And between those, between last Friday, when I received those responses, talking with Mike, and trying to bring myself up to snuff in reading that memo, I've come to the conclusion, again, that we, you know, can save a lot of money on that. So, I, there, we have, okay, there's a couple of issues. So, that's kind of setting the stage here. So, one of the things we talk about is there's very little information on which to judge this. It just, it doesn't seem to exist. And talking to Steve earlier, that there's some, there's a requirement that information be destroyed after three years, which seems unusual. So, I was really disheartened to learn that we don't have enough information to kind of go back and review what happened. But, the other issue is, can we rescind the contract? I mean, are we legally bound to this? I mean, is it a done deal? Or can something be done at this point to step back from that decision? And if not, what are, who's responsible if a decision is made to spend a bunch of money when it turns out that that money doesn't need to be spent? How do we address those two issues? And I asked, I sent these questions to our city attorney, Mr. Davis, and I would like for some of that to be explained to us and put in the public record. And so, the question is, is what is the process that would be required to rescind the contract, if it's possible?
Mayor, Council members, good evening. Jeff Davis, City Attorney. I guess Councilman Moore, it was probably yesterday, I received some of those questions and had made effort to respond. As a foundational point, really, the issue of rescission versus termination, and I won't revert back to my law school days, but this is really more of, I think, a termination issue at this point. Through the democratic processes and representative processes, and because this matter was before a duly-formed meeting and posted on the agenda and voted on, the contract was approved at last council meeting. Based on that approval, it's been executed by both parties. The necessary documentation has been, such as bond information, insurance information, all those things have been exchanged and satisfied those requirements. So, at this, at this point, there's actually a contract in place. Rescission generally speaks to issues, it's almost like an annulment, putting the parties back to the original position they were in prior to the contract being entered into, and there's different areas that you can go into with that, you can go to the courtroom on it. Oftentimes, the basis on rescission, it springs from, say, was, there's a misunderstanding by both parties, was there fraud on behalf of one party, things of that. And we just don't, I don't, at this juncture, see any of that at this point. So, what do we look at? Is there a possibility of termination of the agreement? So, where do we look? We look to the agreement. I will spare you going through all 200 and something pages, because this thing is thick as the Houston phone directory, but I will go directly to the general conditions provision of that, actually, Article 16 of the general conditions of the overall agreement. And there's two sections in that agreement, I think, that are germane to this discussion. The first one being Section 16.01, and it is styled, "Owner may suspend work." And it provides the following, "At any time and without cause, owner may suspend the work or any portion thereof for a period of not more than 90 consecutive days." But, I've written notice to the contractor and the engineer. I would point out also, because this is an important part of that section, that later on, it does say that the contractor shall be entitled to an adjustment in the contract price or an extension of the contract times, or both, directly attributable to any such suspension. So, it is contemplated in this agreement, in the contract that we have in place, that there could be an actual suspension of work for a period of time upon proper written notice up to 90 days. What would be the effect of that? Well, that would most likely extend, there's a 300 or 330-day time period set out in the agreement. There's liquidated damages if the contractor goes beyond that. So, we would probably be in a situation where we might have to extend that out, potentially, if there was, if there was the decision made to suspend the work while you look at other options. Also, we would be responsible to whatever costs were incurred up to this point by the contractor. I can't say what those are. I don't know if we call the contractor, if they could say what that is right now, but we would be responsible for that, and any, if there are additional costs for stopping the project and then restarting, whatever those calculations might be. But, there is a mechanism, and that, one of those mechanisms is in 16.01. The second provision that we would look at would be under Section 16.03, that is styled, "Owner may terminate for convenience." And it provides, in relevant part, that upon seven days' written notice to the contractor and engineer, the owner may, without cause and without presence of any other remedy, the owner terminate the contract. If that is done, then there's three separate categories, subcategories below that. If that is done, of compensation that the contractor would be entitled to. That would be for completed and acceptable work that's been done in accordance with the contract documents, as well as reasonable sums for overhead and profit on such work, expenses sustained prior to the effective date of termination, performing services, such as labor, materials, equipment required, other things. That also is, in addition to that, would be plus fair and reasonable sums for overhead and profit on such expenses, and other reasonable expenses directly attributable to the termination, including costs incurred to prepare termination for convenience, those cost proposals. So, coming full circle, there are two sections under the agreement. One would allow for up to 90 days to suspend it, but there would be certainly costs and delays associated with that. Or, it may be terminated for convenience with those notices that I just spoke of, and also with the potential for those costs that might have been incurred up to the time of the notes.
So, let me repeat what I think you just said. If we want to, we can-
It's going to take a while if you repeat all that.
Let me summarize. If we want to, we-
That'd probably be bad.
If we want to, we could cancel the contract, and there would be some fee associated with work the contractor had done to this point.
Yes, and what, yes, yes, you could. If you made that determination, it's actually styled, "Termination for Convenience." So, it does not have to be for cause.
Right.
There's another section that speaks for cause, but I don't think that's what we're discussing at this point. So, the-
So, they would send the bill, we spent, you know, this amount of money. I mean, they probably had the contract a few days now, right?
They probably had it, they may have had it for two weeks.
Okay, so, they've had it for two weeks. They've done some work, they've spent some money on it.
Yeah.
Have they probably spent less than $500,000?
I would say, but I don't know. I mean, I'm not, and I don't want to hazard a guess, to be perfectly honest, they may have spent-
Okay, they've spent some money.
$5,000, or they may have spent $100,000.
All right. So, we understand. I think, I think, I think I understand where our, we could do it, but it's going to cost some money.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, the other, the other, the other part of the question is, what happens when the city makes a decision that is the wrong decision, and it ends up spending-
makes a decision that is the wrong decision and it ends up spending a lot of money doing that? What is the repercussions of that?
Well, that, that question's probably been asked of all levels of government since the beginning of time, and it probably is largely based on the perspective of the individual asking said question. But with regard to how we go about our business, how is it set out in the charter? How are we, you know, as you well know, it's a representative democracy. The buck literally stops with council at the end of the day on expenditure of funds. And at the end of the day, if a majority rules for an expenditure on an item or on a project, then that's what carries the day.
Okay.
And I guess ultimately, then council members would be held responsible for those expenditures, or how they view those issues.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I hope I answered.
Well, some, you know, somebody should be responsible, because if there's no responsibility for decisions, because we have, from the time that we're made aware that this is going to be an issue till the time we're asked to vote on something is six days. On the other hand, you know, there's been years, yeah, up to this point, including this tomb that is used to tell somebody to put a centrifuge out there. The KSA prepared for $38,500. So I appreciate your time, and I would like to go through, you know, some of the engineering questions of this, specifically based on this additional information that we received last Friday, the KSA engineer letter dated May 5, 2017. And I'll just ask Steve about that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Any other questions? Okay.
Mayor, council, Steve Bartlett again. Councilman?
Thanks. So when, when we talked before, I asked the question about, do we know what's broken? And the answer was, no. It's near its end of its life, and it'd be throwing good money after bad money to fix this machine as opposed to buy a new one. You know, those were the two points that were made. So, and this email, and I'd like to just step through some of this stuff with you if you can. If we look on, this is the May 5 letter, it's dated, I mean, it's page 10 of 17 of your responses. And if you look at the next to the last paragraph, it starts out with, "In addition..."
Okay.
Okay, this is, so we're going, the process is right to assist with reducing the operator man hours required to run the equipment. And this is, "Based on this throughput, the centrifuge would only be expected to run two hours per day for a full plant design flow rate of 20 million gallons per day." So what I read that is, we're gonna get a centrifuge that doesn't require people to, you know, monitor it very much, and it's gonna be two hours a day. Now, I am under the impression, and I don't know this for fact, that our, our plant doesn't work, function anywhere near maximum.
That's correct.
So two hours per day is a conservative estimate. It would be less than that probably. And then if we look at, at the, and this is a little, you know, I mean, I spent as much time as I possibly could between last Friday at noon and today, going through this stuff and trying to figure it out. And we look, and I, we have a, before we do that, why don't we look at what has happened with this centrifuge? And I prepared this little spreadsheet based on the information that you gave me. It's Table 1. Okay? I think, I think you have that.
This was what you emailed, your cost table?
Did I, let me, I don't-
And I'm sorry, I mean-
Yeah, I really just finished these up at, you know, right before I got over here. I don't remember. Here it is.
But go ahead, I recall.
Let me just hand it, can you hand that to him?
Thank you.
So if you look at this, I mean, it looks like the, and this is the information that you provided me, that you tried to look up, and I tried to take that and put it in a form I understood. So on August 1, we bought a new centrifuge, 2002. I'm guessing at that, approximately around there. And then 12 years later, the centrifuge was taken out of service. So that's 12 years of use. And during that time, we spent, including the centrifuge, $560,000 approximately. And then after the centrifuge was taken out of service for the next, I guess, from 2015, about three years, we spent another $240,000 having somebody come in and provide a service for, for what the centrifuge did because it was broken.
Dewatering, yes.
Right. And then we hired KSA to, they came over, they looked at it, and they said, "It's broken, buy a new one." And they prepared that for $38,500. So if we look at this letter from May 5, and we look over here at what they recommend, they, they recommended the Centrix thing, and that shows the expected lifespan is 20 years plus. That's a minimum of 20 years. And then they, they talk about their maintenance schedule. And so I, what I did is a little spreadsheet, you know, using, so that's, the point being here is, that's, that's the minimum of 20 years. Ours lasted for 12 years. And 20 years plus means it could be 20 years, it could be 60 years. And centrifuges, according to Mike, he works on centrifuges that have been, that are and have been in function since the late 60s. So I really am suspicious of the question about the lifespan. And then, so what I did is a spreadsheet using this part that they included in this letter for type, I know this is all technical, but the bottom line is here, they have a series of estimated times for maintenance, 3,000 hours, 6,000 hours, 9,000 hours, and so forth like that. That's like, you know, you have your 10,000 mile checkup, your 20,000 mile checkup like that. So I, using two hours for thing, for, it goes all the way, when we get to the 30, 30,000 hour checkup, that's at 58 years before we would do that. It would be, looks like six years before we even change the oil in it. That's halfway through it. And then if I look under the regular maintenance, it goes to 3,000, 15,000, and 100,000. At 100,000 hours, at two hours per day, that's 192 years. So those don't add up. I mean, it doesn't add up that we have a machine that is, that's its lifespan when it's only at twice the time that, when we would change, do our very first maintenance. So, you know, that's just an internal, within, within what they gave us. You know, this is using just their information. And so that doesn't make any sense.
Do you have any further questions?
Yeah, I do. I guess what I really, and then so, what is, so those are statements. And I would also, and when Mike came up, you know, he talked about it, and he mentioned to you, "You need to vent it." And I want to read the letter that he sent me Monday. And Mike has been, Mike R. Scott has been working for this company for 25 years, and I would like to end the minutes from last time I called it, "Centrifuge Consultants," about 10 or 15 years. They changed the name to "Centrifuge Services and Engineering," so slight difference. But I'm just gonna read what he says. "The Alpha LaValve ALDEC 556 decanter centrifuge of Nacogdoches Water Treatment Facility. The machine was not in operation during my visit. Steve Bartlett and Bart Allen explained the problem occurring while operating the machine with the blowout of product around the case seal and the plugging of the machine. These problems are indicative of a lack of ventilation. My inspection of the machine revealed that the machine has no ventilation as recommended in the installation manual. Originally, the machine was able to vent through the solids discharge chute. The problem was that the wind would push some of the solids away from the container, making a mess. The solution was to extend the chute to the container with a tarp. This resulted in a lack of ventilation, causing the aforementioned problems. Lack of ventilation is a relatively common problem that can easily be fixed." And every description of the problem that you, you provided with us was blowout. There were no questions about vibrations, or sounds, or smoke, or anything like that. So what I understand, my understanding of it, and what Mike's understanding is, is that if you just go out there and cut that chute off, it will probably work right. Now, it might not, because it's been sitting broke for three years, you know, and in fact, in its sludge, and there's a lot of problems with that. But that is, to rebuild a machine is $40,000, which is basically the same price that we paid that engineering company to tell us to buy a new one. And I am just, I find that to not have been willing to take the time after three years of not working to have somebody come out there and look at it and review this was, was wrong, and I don't understand it. And I think that we have a chance right now to step back from that decision and save a lot of money. And what I would like for you to do, I would like for you to review what I've just talked about. I would like to you to get with the guy in KSA and provide a written explanation for why we need to replace it rather than, you know, what Mike has provided in this one-page letter. And so at least we'd have some documentation on why we're moving forward. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request, and it would save a lot of money. And I don't know about other people, but, you know, $520,000 is a lot of money that we could use for other purposes with almost very little cost of getting a good answer to that question. So.
So what is actually the question you would like for him to answer now?
The question, there are no questions. I've, I've expressed my position. What I would like is that you provide in writing an explanation, because we, y'all have never said what you think is wrong with it. Mike says it's not vented, and it's an easy solution. And so if you've got another explanation for why this material is blowing out, I'd like to see that in writing and have it documented and part of the public record. Because I, you know, I thought, we sat down and talked about it, I can't think of any other thing that would make that happen. You know, I, just like if we took a centrifuge and we wanted to go out and do something to it to make that occur, there's only one thing we could do, and that would be block the discharge. Because you have 10 PSI coming in through the in-feed line, and you have zero PSI under atmospheric conditions, and the pressure inside of there is supposed to be zero PSI. And if it's more than zero PSI, you're gonna have blowout, which is the description that you provided, you know, out there in your presentation and, you know, in all the documentation. I don't know of anything else that can make that happen. And I'd like to know what else could make that happen other than that.
Do you want to respond to that?
Sure. Let me just briefly respond to a few items.
Sure.
First of all, on the lifespan issue, the material that you're looking at is lifespan issues for the proposed centrifuge. So it's a different animal of a different color. I don't know what those equivalents were for the Alpha LaValve unit that we have and the expected lifespan. I can tell you, reality is reality. We ran this unit for about six or seven years, relatively trouble-free. We greased it and did what we were supposed to supposedly, according to maintenance logs. But after that point in time, the unit began to fail, and we had a repeated history of failure and rebuilds or repairs, however you classify those. And none of those were successful in the unit running for a very long time. And so our evidence that we have is that we have been unable, with several vendors, including one being the manufacturer, to have this thing run. You are correct, there should be thousands of hours of greasing-only, maintenance-free running, and we have not seen that for this period. So I will say, what has been history is part of what we seriously evaluated in the fact that this thing isn't going to function this way. Do we need yet a third vendor or a fourth vendor to look at it? I mean, that's what you're proposing, is that we take it apart.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm proposing.
What, and I say, we've already been down this road, is my point. I mean, what we were told, when, he was kind enough to come out, he was a very nice man, and very knowledgeable and very respectful, and I enjoyed our time, and I hope we get to do business in some point in the future. But I've got to tell you, it was a very cursory walkthrough, and look at this. The email that you received yesterday afternoon, I assume from him, you presented it to me at 5:15 tonight. So there's no way I can totally evaluate what's in his email.
Right, but it's also what he said to you when we were out there.
Right, and so I want to respond to that. The chute-
And I apologize for not sending that to you. Until Shelley said, "Why don't you, you get that email?" And I went home and got it, I forgot it.
Well, it's hard to, you know it's hard to vet all that without, with 15 minutes.
Yes.
But it's been sent to you as well. Mr. Jeffers, I think, has emailed that to all of council while you were here, so you can read it for yourself. But let me basically describe so they understand. The centrifuge is in the second story of a building. Underneath is an open area where we either back trucks in, or we put roll-offs, and the material is collected and hauled off. So the centrifuge discharges this solids materials below it. And to do that, there is a vinyl-coated fabric chute. It is 27 and 1/4 inches in diameter at the top and narrows down. And it's just what you think it is, it's a chute to keep it in there. When the chute's not being used in a container, it's got a rope that ties it off to the side. His comment was, is that's tied off to the side, it's plugged, it's cramped, and none of that's been the case. I talked to Bart again before, Bart Allen, before we came in, and Bart says, "You know, we haven't changed the operation from the first day." So I would say, without looking at the operations manual and their recommendation for ventilation that he's proposing in this email, what I'm telling you is, the first seven years we operated that chute the same way we operate it now, and we haven't had plug issues. This all happened after rebuilds, after repair. So I still have a hard time believing that it is the chute and plugging and ventilation. His ventilation discussion when we were there was in fact, off the top of a unit going through the roof, was what he spoke to us about, councilman. So I don't know. He's, his answer to me was, "Steve, the way we work," and he's a vendor who sells rebuilds, and again, a qualified, nice person, I'm not disputing that, was that basically, we pay them a fee, they take it apart, look at it, they tell us if it can be rebuilt, and he said, "And it probably can." And then they will tell us the cost of that. So none of those have been determined, and that's the process that he proposed to us.
Well, the process to take it apart and tell you if it can be rebuilt is $2,500.
That's correct.
And, you know, we're talking, there's a big, big difference between $565,000 and $40,000. You know, and obviously, it's not, I mean, yes, you're right, there's not a number on there that says what the expected life of an Alpha LaValve, whatever that number is, ALDEC 556 is. But I'm pretty sure that it's same as the other ones. I just am find it, you know-
Well, council, this comes down, if I can, this comes down to what I think's a philosophical question. What you hire me for, and what I try to do, is evaluate all this information and try to come to you with a recommendation that I think is the best for the city, that maintains the level of service that I think we should provide citizens, and that includes, it's the same discussion we had earlier with Mr. Walker on the garbage truck that has a, needs a $30,000 repair. We could repair that garbage truck, but Carrie and I spoke and looked at this several weeks ago and decided we need to move forward with the new garbage truck that's on schedule. It is that kind of philosophy. Could the garbage truck last another year? Well, I assure you, someone will buy that on gov deals, and will put it in City X, and we'll fix the $30,000 and try to drive it. But it would not meet our level of service standards that we try to provide for our customers. All I'm saying is, in my opinion, after evaluating all this evidence, that there is a risk, there is a risk that if we do the rebuild, that we will not provide the level of service. And that's the best I can tell you, is I've, I've weighed all this and I've come to you with those conclusions. You may or may not agree with them, and I understand that.
I don't agree.
But my point is, that's what I've given you to choose from. And I still stand it with that recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Can you, will you prepare in writing a, a letter memo explaining, in collaboration with your, your centrifuge expert and KSA, what is, what's broken on the machine? I want to know, have that written. And you can also explain what other than poor venting would cause the, the blow-by to occur? What other, what other thing could happen to make that happen?
Councilman, at this point, I work at the pleasure of Mr. Jim Jeffers, and he works at your pleasure. And so council would have to direct that to happen, and I will follow whatever instructions I get to report, however, that's my job. So going through that process is how I would do that.
Okay. Well, I've done the best I can. I've laid out everything I possibly can, I've brought in, you know, what's the chance that you have a childhood friend that's been doing this for 25 years? Zero, slightly more than zero. But I find it, I find there'd be no convincing explanation other than what he said. be no convincing explanation other than what he said to cause the, the, whatever, I can't think of the word right now, to cause the method of failure. It's, you know, that's the method of failure, and I can't, I couldn't imagine any way to, in a laboratory, to create that from happening other than this. So.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this issue? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilman. Matt, in your handout here, it's got the new centrifuge delivery date of January 1, 2019?
That's a guess. I mean, a lot of this-
I was told at the last meeting that it would be a year and a half before the new centrifuge was online.
That was what I estimated.
I don't recall.
And based on that, with the approximately $100,000 a year to mitigate the not having a centrifuge available is $150,000, which sort of needs to be added into the costs of a new machine versus a rebuild, assuming that, the sense that I have is that a rebuild can take place in a month, two months maybe, and then you'd be back in service. In the questions that Matt gave to Mr. Bartlett, asking for the name of the expert in Austin, copy of his or her qualifications, the person has nearly 20 years of experience designing water and wastewater treatment systems for municipalities. As an architect, I am very cognizant of the fact that there is a significant difference in knowledge between an architect who designs new buildings and people who deal with maintenance and rebuilding of equipment and ongoing services. And so 20 years' experience designing systems, to me, says he knows a lot about how to create a book like this and order a new machine. He may not know anything whatsoever about diagnosing a problem with an existing machine. Somebody like Mr. Arscott, who deals with that on a daily basis for 25 years, would have significantly greater chance of identifying what the problems are and what the best way of dealing with fixing it. If, if you don't want to take Mr. Arscott's word for it and proceed with having him do a more detailed investigation and actually running the machine up to verify whether it will or won't work, then it would seem like you've got a sort of an arbitration situation where maybe inviting a third party chosen by the two parties that disagree on how reasonably this might be dealt with and move forward. The problem is that you're sitting there with a contract, with contractor expending money on a daily basis, who either needs to be stopped where they are so that they don't incur additional expenses, or recognize the fact that the clock is running, and this really needs to be dealt with fairly quickly. I suspect that there's a high probability that the piece of equipment would work just fine without the discharge sock on it. And you would be up and running with just a few thousand dollars expended, and in a very short period of time. It might be well worth asking the contractor, according to your information, that there is the opportunity to call the contractor to cease operations. And then if you choose to continue on, there is an additional expense for the number of days involved in delaying the contract. But that will be relatively small in the overall scheme of things if you can turn around and save $500,000. Even if it has to be rebuilt at $40,000, you still save $500,000 on that and $150,000 on mitigating the not having it running. So I think there are a lot of opportunities here to potentially save a lot of money that Nacogdoches might love to expend in some other way.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Phillips. Yes, Mr. Maher?
Councilman Mayor, my name is Phil Maher. Appreciate the opportunity to come to the meeting. I don't get to come to very many, but I am one of the thousands of viewers that watch you on TV. And just to let you know, there's a big crowd out there. If Mr. Davis would, for the record, Mr. Davis, if you wouldn't mind putting in the record that the camera does add 20 pounds. Okay, thank you. In a previous life, I was on a governmental, a couple governmental boards. I applaud what you do. I understand how difficult it is. But tonight, I'm here to talk about a specific agenda item that says reconsider. And I have a problem with reconsidering something. As an aside to that, I'm going to give you my opinion. My opinion from the limited data that I've looked at is that you voted correctly the last time. The person that wants, the councilman that wants to reconsider this used that same word, opinion. Everybody's going to have an opinion. Y'all voted. It should be a done deal. Talking about looking at this issue and having served on boards before, if I missed this, let me know. But in my review of the data, it was in the budget for 1718. It was approved to go out to bid. There was a public bid. The board approved and awarded the contract, and the contract was signed. That's a process. You went through it, and you did it. I want to address the issue of reconsidering something that's already been voted on. First of all, as a taxpayer, I don't appreciate expending all of the staff of the city's time looking at something that's already been voted on. I want them to do the business of the city, and I think you should too. Secondarily, this is an egregious act, and it ruins the integrity of the bidding process, the contract progress, and the integrity of the city. And when something goes out and action's taken and a contract's signed, you don't come back and look at it again unless there's fraud involved. I'll tell you what the president could be to take this to a logical extreme. Next time you're looking for a city manager, I hope it's not for a while, but, you know, you hire him, you sign him to a contract, and then next month, you said, now we're going to review you and say, we might re-nig on that. In every, every meeting you go to, and what does that look like for the city? I don't think it's the proper method to run this great community. You're talking about termination of convenience. I've been involved in those. Let me tell you, not only has my background been in governmental, on school boards and such, but I've also been in and associated with the contracting industry for too many decades to really mention today. And I've been through terminations of convenience. And remember, in contract law, there's no immunity for a city. The attorney's fees, interest, damages are all part of a contract and can be assessed against the city. And you don't know if submittals are out. We don't know if purchase orders have been already sent out. I've been in one termination for convenience that lasted seven years and cost hundreds of thousands of dollars for both parties. It's not an avenue that you want to do on an opinion. I'm going to ask that you uphold your decision and move forward for the best interests of the citizens in Nacogdoches. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
If I can ask you a question.
Absolutely. You can ask me a question. Sure.
I guarantee I'll answer it, but you may ask it.
So the way, do you think that we should just, if, I mean, so it's either true or false that we need a new machine? Do you agree with that? Oh, it's not either true or false? Maybe we do, maybe we don't?
I mean, that's, what I'm talking to you about is, the decision's been made. Have you proved beyond a shadow of a doubt that one is needed or not needed?
No, I haven't.
Well, neither have I. That's why we vote.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Mayor McDonald, welcome.
Just Judy. It's Judy McDonald. And first of all, I want to thank y'all for spending all this time and effort, and particularly the deep work you have to do to get yourself prepared for these meetings. Now, I want to tell you something. First thing is, I've not talked to any staff. I promise you, I don't know the last time, I may have seen him at Rotary, but I hadn't seen Jeffers in months, and Steve, and I don't remember when. But I'm going to tell you something. This city is so fortunate, and they are so blessed, and we ought to be on our knees every night thanking God for every one of these people that have put their time and effort into this city. We have had staff here, and you can, you know, you take Mr. Bartlett, I worked with him for years, years when he was in the private sector. I can't tell you the hours that he gave to this city. I mean, gave. Every once in a while, Steve'd say, you know, Judy, at some point, I got to start the clock on you. But when it came to economic development or whatever we needed for this community, he was there. Honest, forthright, gave his best opinion, and he did his homework. Now, I haven't seen anything presented tonight that changes that. When you talk about finances, because this all comes down to that nearly half million, half billion dollars for spending, the person you got making that decision at the end of the day is a person that has been placed on a board by the organizations of all the cities in Texas, Texas municipally. This man was elected to sit on the board to decide how the money is spent for their retirement and their, everybody, all of y'all, all of our cities in the state of Texas. This man decides how that money is invested. So you're talking about people with great integrity, people who know what they're doing, and you've got people who came out of the private sector, fully prepared, fully educated, to do this job. And that's why you sit there, and you may have extra expertise, but you don't have all of the background and the expertise that this man has, nor do you have what KSA has. KSA has been working on this city before my time. Now, they aren't the only one. We had Shawn Burton Pope, you've had, I don't know how many. But we have had really good people, and they work every day trying to make this city better. I'm going to tell you something about that piece of equipment. Now, I know you're a farmer. Matt, I've known you since you were a kid. And I know you've had farm equipment. I have. You've got something. Well, you had a farm.
I'm an engineer.
Yeah, but you got a farm. But we got equipment. Okay, pretend you do. You got a tractor. It'd be John Deere, it can be the best tractor ever made. Okay, we got a tractor. The whole thing, it works really good. I mean, I bought it in hopes it's going to last 20 years. I've got two sitting in my garage. You go five, six years, and the sucker breaks down. All right, you get out there with the baling wire, you do what you can to pull it together. Or you may have even called in the best person in the world, maybe the manufacturer, and they fix the thing up, and it runs another month or two or six months, year. The, you know, the guarantee's gone, so you get more baling wire out, or you call somebody else in, and you pay that guy to fix it. You go through that for, I don't know, another two or three years. And finally, after spending all this money getting this thing repaired time and again, all the effort and time, whatever, and then you get down, you got it 12 years, and the sucker just flat out won't run. So you say, you know what, I've been throwing all this money at this sucker, but I don't have the money to buy a new one. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to set that aside, and I'm going to go out here, and I'm going to hire somebody to plow my field or cut my hay, and I'm going to pay that guy to do it. But while I build up my money to go buy me a new John Deere tractor, it comes time, and you get up there, and you say, I got the money. This sucker's been sitting here three years, and I've been paying all this other money to try to get my, to get the work done. You get a banker who says, you know what, we'll go with you. You get four people to say, this is the deal, that you made the right decision. The people that we have trusted over these years, we've got an engineer, we've got an engineer company that we've worked with for God only knows how long, saying the same thing. But we got this one person then that comes in and comes in the field, and he says, you know, and I know a lot, and I think maybe I might, not necessarily can, but I might be able to fix that thing up and let it run another couple of years. But now, I ain't making no promises, and I don't give you any guarantee, because I hadn't looked at it good enough. Now, I'm going to tell you something. I think you ought to buy the new tractor.
Thank you. Did I see another hand? Yes?
I don't have a big opinion about this because I don't know a lot about centrifuges, but I do want to say that I do appreciate the discussion that you guys are having. I think it's very interesting, and I like to know that we have all of this consideration going on in city council. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Keller?
Mayor, council, this is the first time since I left office here to have an opportunity to come up here. And I think one of the wonderful things about being in city council is that you can represent the entire community and part of your own community, whatever ward that is. But at the end of the day, if you cannot legitimately say that I'm going to fall on the sword and do what's best for this community, you shouldn't be on city council. Never. Tonight, I've listened and listened and listened to an issue that's already been resolved. You voted two weeks ago. Why is it being readdressed? We're having 20% of 100% of the council here trying to rule what's going on, and that's just not right. These people here that have extended their time, they're non-exempt employees, so they're not getting paid for what they're doing. They're sitting up here listening to stuff and individuals who have not done their homework in advance to intelligently make that decision. Now, Councilman Moore, you voted against this. That's history. This motion was up. That's history. To continually antagonize the city and the employees here, who I duly respect on any given occasion, is ridiculous. And so, like Judy and the gentleman before me, I trust these individuals. That's why they are paid to do what they're doing. And that's why you're getting paid the big bucks, and you make decisions. You have a right to vote. You made that vote. That's hurt. And I just think trying to put everything and every item under the microscope every other week is just ridiculous. And I appreciate what you do, because I've been in your shoes. And I appreciate what you do, because I've been in your shoes, and I definitely appreciate everything that these individuals have done. For me, it was a blessing to get to know them while I was on city council. But, again, the bottom line is, a motion's been made. It was made two weeks ago. It should never have been even reconsidered. And I'm offended that that sort of behavior continues every time I'm here listening to what you say. And that's, that's it. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Counsel, any further? Yeah.
Oh, I think, I think, yeah. We're closing public comment for this, so.
I'll just say, I will continue to, when I think something is wrong, I will continue to stand up for what I will believe. Do I have all the information? Absolutely, I do not. We are given six days to look at this. We've tried to do the best we possibly can. We were given an additional, when we were given the information to make this decision, we were given a picture of a centrifuge and a picture of the building it was in. Since that time, we've been given, you know, a memo done a year and three months ago that had data in it that specifically disputed the explanation for why we needed a new one. And if I think I'm right, I will stand up for that, and if it's to the benefit of the Nacogdoches, where we can save money and solve the problem for less money, then so be it. If we make a mistake, you have to be able to step back, step back from that mistake. You know, the biggest mistake you can make is whenever you make a mistake, being afraid to say, "I made a mistake, I need to go back and fix this." I believe that there's a high probability that this is a mistake, and I don't in any way regret, you know, trying to right that mistake, or at least, you know, see, further explore it, especially when there's no, or very little cost to doing so, and I am not apologetic for doing that at all. That does not mean I don't respect the city. Steve has said many times, he's not an expert on centrifuges. He deferred to KSA engineers for their, they did not provide him an explanation for what was wrong with the machine. They just said, "You need a new one." And I've asked that you explain how it's broken. That doesn't seem to be too big of a request. You know, if they know what's wrong, just say it. It's a one-letter deal. This is what's wrong with it. You know, but I don't think that that's what's wrong with it. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baldwin?
I just have two things to say, and it keep, the word mistake keep coming up. I have not seen anything or heard anything that a mistake has been made, a wrong decision. There hasn't been a wrong decision yet. We don't know. So, my opinion different than Councilman Moore. I don't think we should rescind what we've already done, and that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Well, I concur that I have not heard anything new that would change my mind, but what I do stand on is our employees that are educated, they're trained professionals, they are licensed, they are credentialed. They study this ad nauseam, and when they need to seek expert advice, they are prudent in seeking expert advice. Throughout this process, and having served on the council a number of years, I have to tell you, I have the utmost confidence in our city staff, and that they have, truly have the best interests of our city at heart. As to the governmental process, we may disagree when a vote doesn't go our way, because I've been on that side of it also, but we have a representative form of government, and we operate under majority rule. And so, as far as reconsidering this agenda item, again, I haven't seen anything to cause me to change my mind as far as terminating the contract, and that's all I have to say. But therefore, I will make a motion to affirm the decision council made at their July 17, 2018 meeting, awarding the centrifuge replacement project contract to Wharton Smith.
Was that a motion? Oh, I second the motion.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any other new discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. We have agenda item, and thank you all for speaking and being involved. Appreciate it. Number 13, presentation of proposed 2018-19 budget and set hearing dates for both budget and tax rate. Ms. Kerbo, good evening.
Mayor, council, Pam Kerbo, Director of Finance. Tonight, we're going to satisfy a few statutory requirements. We need to actually officially present the budget to y'all. You received it by email last week. I hope you have spent as many late nights reading it as me and my staff spent designing it, but it's riveting, it really is. We also have to tonight set the public hearing dates for both budget and tax rate, so we will need to do that at the end. We're going to take a kind of quick overlook of the current year budget. These slides are going to look similar to what you have seen the last three meetings with Mr. Jeffers. He was looking at the current year budget. These are going to be the proposed year budgets. You will notice there's not a whole lot of difference in these, but we'll go over them very quickly. To start off with, property taxes. The assessed value came in this year at $1.634 billion. That includes 7.4 million in new property added to the tax roll. We have proposed a tax rate of .6169 per $100 valuation. You can see that that is including debt of $1.3 million, and the effective tax rate calculated this year at .57756. So the proposed tax rate is about 2.4 cents higher than the effective tax rate. The general fund revenues are at 2.55 million. Percentage-wise, these are pretty much the same as the current year. The property tax section, of course, is always our biggest section. Sales tax, we actually have increased the budget on sales tax next year for the actual collections this year. We did not propose any increases or decreases. We are using a conservative estimate that we hope to maintain sales tax at the current level. Franchise fees, inter-fund transfers, and various other revenues, all are pretty much at the same percentage as the current year. Nothing significantly changed there. Expenditures in the general fund are at $25.1 million, the majority of that being public safety, as it always is. General government, cultural, highways, and a slight inter-fund transfer. You'll notice that the next slide breaks that down by classification. And of course, personnel services, salaries and benefits for our employees are 78%. This is one of the things that makes it very difficult in trimming the expenditure budget, is because almost 80% of that is staff. And so, over the years, we've been able to consolidate some staffing issues, and of course, we've been blessed and not had to do life lots of other cities. We have not had to release folks. We have eliminated positions through attrition, but it's very difficult to cut expenditures significantly when 80% of that is personnel. The proposed capital expenditures for the 18-19 year are quite a bit less than what we have done in the past. We only have $81,000 worth of capital equipment that we have proposed, and $330,000 of CIP items. And you can see there, though, that streets is $250,000, which is the street rehab money that we are committed to budgeting every year. A match for the North Street sidewalk, and some work at the Sunset Cemetery in order to expand so that we have additional lots to sell there. For utility fund, this is almost identical to what it usually is. Water and sewer is almost half and half. This does include a rate increase. If you'll remember, two years ago, council adopted a five-year rate study implementation. We are in year three of that. The majority of those increases this year are going to be in meter-size minimums. Anything, I think it's over one inch and over, we'll see a slight increase in their monthly minimum charges, but not the 5/8 inch meters, which is, the majority of residential customers will see no increase, even for the five years. Though, that minimum was set for the full five years, so there will be no further increases Sanitation, I mean, not sanitation. Sewer, we do have a 5 cent per 1,000-gallon increase, and that's for all classifications. Expenditures in the utility fund, this one is broke down by department, and it's kind of, this pie's a little bit easier to look at. It's not all in one area. Most of this, of course, is in debt service. We have bonds for the water and wastewater facilities that we are paying out. And then, of course, the inter-fund transfers that Jim has talked to y'all about in prior meetings, which is the share of general fund work that does for utility and both sanitation when we get there later, as well as a grocery receipts, basically a franchise fee that we charge to the utility fund. So those are, those split by function, by classification. Here again, personnel in this department is only about 19%. The big difference there is, the general fund has all the firemen and policemen, and they have, you know, a significant number of employees in the general fund, whereas utility does not. Inter-fund transfers, supplies and materials, maintenance, those types of things. Sundry charges, that is your payment on your bonds, that's principal and interest payments on bonds. For capital in utility fund, we have equipment of $177,000 and CIP items of about 3.2 million of new items. Now, we still have quite a few ongoing CIP items in the utility fund. These are just going to be new monies for the 18-19 year. Sanitation fund, proposed revenues, here again, has not changed a whole lot. Percentage-wise, there is a proposed 5% increase across the board for sanitation charges, as we have done for the last two years, per the five-year rate study. So, that hasn't changed significantly. The expenses by department, collection and disposal, are account for about 25% each, and then the inter-fund transfers, here again, is the franchise fees and the portion of the general fund operating expenses. By classification, here again, you'll see that when you split it by classification, that inter-fund transfers takes up about 50% of that, 25% for personnel services. Here again, sanitation doesn't have as many employees as the other funds. Sanitation proposed capital expenditures, this number, I know that Mr. Walker mentioned earlier, that the garbage truck that y'all approved earlier, it has already been removed. We had discussed that, and we decided to go ahead and not present it in the proposed, and if y'all had decided not to purchase the truck now, we would have, we would have added it back. So this, this includes one residential truck, and I believe some kind of equipment at the landfill, I'm not sure what. I could look it up. And then, landfill expansion, another $400,000, are working on the permitting and stuff to expand the landfill. That kind of covers all of the major three funds. I know that we have a budget workshop next week. I hope that y'all have had time to dig through and really come up with some detailed questions. I have, I will be happy to answer anything that I can now, but tonight, I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of where we are, and then Monday, we will dig into, dig into the budget. Going forward, tonight, again, we need to set the date for the public hearings. There's two, I forgot to put an S on there. And then, like I said, we'll have the workstation, work session next week, then we will have the two public hearings and adopt according to the schedule before you, if you have any questions.
Is there anyone that wants to speak to this presentation? Or are the dates being set? Okay, hearing done. Council members, any questions or comments for Ms. Kerbo?
I've been going through this a little bit. On the general fund summary, under the very last tranche of things that you have on the capital equipment budget, what is PEG capital?
Okay, that is a, that, we get a franchise fee from the cable company, and several years ago, the legislature split off, I think it's a 5% fee, that now has to be, it still goes to the city. We get it as a franchise, but it's a separate payment from the cable franchise, and it can only be used to, for a public education system, like TV system. So that is the money that we can use to make the facilities and buy the equipment to broadcast this on the public TV channel. And that $100,000, that is, it's, we, I think we have $300,000 or $400,000, I think, built up in that. It's a quarterly payment, and that is just something to budget for any unseen needs as we go through. There's not a set, you know, item that we are going to use that far. That is something, as the needs arise, then that, that will be there to, to do it. We have very strict rules about what we can spend that money on. We can't do it to maintain the system, only capital expenditures. So, you know, we can buy TV cameras, we can buy computer equipment, and we can remodel, you know, the building to house a TV station or whatever, but that we can't maintain anything. So it's strictly capital.
Okay, and just so clear, so you have operating restricted in total. And, you know, I look at this, you know, I mean, basically, I see this as kind of a, this, this presentation here is kind of a combination of a, of a balance sheet and a P and L statement. And you start off with so much money, you add to it, then you stack from it, and you end up with so much in it before. So it's kind of different than normal accounting, where you have a P and L, and then you have a balance sheet. And what does it mean where it says restricted? What does that mean?
Okay, there, there are certain funds that we collect, especially, and most of these are going to be, half of it's PEG, which is the cable franchise, that's restricted. The state says you can only spend it for this. The other part of that money, the other $48,500 that's under fines, those are court fines, that the court says, the state says, these monies can only be-
What is it?
The $48,500 revenue up there, that's fines, unrestricted. Yes. That is money that's coming from the court. It is three different things. One is child safety fund, one is a municipal court security fund, which we use to pay for the part-time warrant officer that works the court security, and then it is the technology fund. And that is all driven by the state. We can't use that money for anything but what the state says we can, so that's why we have to restrict it.
So restricted means money to be spent for what the state tells us to spend it for?
Yes, yes.
Okay, restrict, so you say restricted to state requirements?
Yes.
Okay, those, so we're, you know, I've just started going through this, I'll go through a lot more, but, thanks.
No, that's okay, but we can't, we, I was trying to think of another question while we wait just a moment, because we need three of us here to vote to set the hearing dates, so.
I did not put the, oh, yeah, I did. I was going to say, I want to make sure I had the hearing dates on there so you can make the motion.
And explain, I will explain briefly, I'm not sure everybody knows why they're set that way.
Okay, so, we, we have different requirements. If, if we were to adopt the effective tax rate, then we would only have, the state only requires one hearing. Since we are proposing a tax rate higher than the effective tax rate, that clues in the two, two public hearings. Now, we do two public hearings on budget and tax rate. By statute, we only have to do two on tax rate. We only have to do one on budget. But we do two because we kind of try to keep them together, and it gives the opportunity for a public input, a little extra than what the actual state requires, so.
Sure, that's sort of been traditional for a while, for us to do that.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes?
Can you come up here so we can hear the question?
Thank you.
I was just curious about-
I'm curious about the special budget work session. What is that?
Sure. The special budget work session is a session where the council members are going to get together and talk about the budget, ask questions, propose different decisions. I'm sure there's very little discretionary monies for us to see, but it also looks at the financial plan for the next year, and it gives us a time to do that and work together and discuss.
Is it open to the public?
Come up. Yes, it is posted. Yes, it is posted, and the public is welcome to attend if they would like to.
Cool, thanks.
And I think is the draft budget online?
It's online. On the city's website, you'll find the draft budget. And that meeting is at 4:30 instead of 5:30, is that right?
Yes.
4:30 on Monday.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no other questions for Ms. Carbo or comments? Let's see, do we have to list the dates in a motion?
I believe, I believe, yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. So, I move that we set the hearing dates for both the budget and tax rate to August 21 and September the 4th. And on September 18, we will adopt our budget fee schedules and ratify tax rate.
That's the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Are we having executive session this evening? No. Okay. Thank you for attending. Meeting is adjourned.